Morning and welcome to our April 13th Board of Commissioners meeting. Glad to see so many with us here today. Today, we have an invocation which will be led by Pastor Nathan Woodward of North Metro Church and our pledge to follow with firefighter Elizabeth Cook of Station 5 Seashift. If those of you are willing and able, please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Thank you guys so much for having me today. Like she said, I'm the kid's pastor at North Metro Church, so it's good to be here and good to pray over you guys and all that will be here today. So let's pray together. Father God, thank you so much for, first of all, just waking us up this morning. Thank you so much for putting breath in our lungs. I pray that we would use the breath in our lungs today to be kind and compassionate to one another as you have asked us to do. God, and I pray for the commissioners here and the wisdom, give them the wisdom that they need to make decisions and, God, that you would give us the peace that surpasses all understanding in any situation that may arise today, God, and may just, we be reminded that our good isn't always the good that you're working out, God. And so we're just grateful and thankful for the opportunities that you're going to present today, and we're just thankful that you're present and here this morning. It's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our meeting is officially called to order. At the beginning of each meeting, we have had a COVID update provided by Cobb Douglas Public Health, so bear with us as we queue that up virtually.
Good morning, everyone, and thanks for having us.
Good morning, Dr. Memark.
Hey, good morning. So I'm here today, I'm Dr. Janet Memark, District Health Director, and I'm here with Lisa Crossman, our Deputy Director, to give you an update on COVID at this time. All right, so as we look at our cases, a lot of you know that we follow this case rate throughout the county. We are very happy that our cases have come down to 225 cases per 100,000. That is good because it's probably one of the lowest that we've reached in a while, but it is still of concern. So remember, it's still over 100 cases per 100,000, which is considered high spread. And I do believe that we had a lot of people that were out of town, and so I'm a little bit nervous that this is maybe a little bit falsely low at this point. So we're keeping a really good eye on this. All of the activities of spring break and over the last holiday, the Easter holiday, we should see that come out about in the next two weeks. And so a lot of people have been asking me, you know, what my thoughts are on our situation, and I do feel like the next couple of weeks will be very telling for us, and I'll show you a little bit more on why. One of the other numbers that we look at is the positivity rate on the test, and this is only the PCR test that we're able to get these rates on. So currently, the PCR tests are about 5.5%, and that is pretty good for what we're looking at for the positivity rate. Now, we do continue to see deaths that are coming into us. So when we look at, yesterday I gave a report that we were at about 999 deaths that were between the probable and confirmed deaths in our county. We surpassed that milestone yesterday, and we're at 1,008 confirmed and possible probable deaths. So this is something that we're definitely keeping an eye on. It has slowed down, but we're still continuing to lose our citizens to COVID-19. And so this is one of those things that we really are trying to stop too, hopefully. When you look at the regional hospital data, there has been a mild increase in the number of cases we've seen. Over the last couple of weeks, even in our regional districts, we have seen an increase in cases. Now, it's nothing like the surges that we had seen, but it's not where it was at the lowest possible numbers that we've seen. So it has come up a little bit, and we're keeping a very close eye on the hospitalizations throughout our district. So this is the last time you're going to see this map of the variants from the CDC. And those of you that have been keeping up with the news probably know why. It's because the B.1.1.7 variant has become the dominant strain of COVID-19 that we're seeing in the United States. So we've been telling you that this has a doubling time of every 10 days and has been following that trajectory. In Georgia, last time I reported to you, last week, it was only in the 500s that this variant was detected in Georgia. Now it's well over 1,000, and they are stopping individual case reporting of the variant. So they'll just give us percentages of what they're seeing, but it is very quickly multiplying right beneath us. So we do have the other variants, the B.1.3.51 variant, the one that originated in South Africa, and then the P.1. variant that originated in Brazil. So we have all of these variants in Georgia that continue to multiply and spread. So here's some of the transmission data we just talked about. We continue to be at more than high rates of transmission for the county at 225 cases per 100,000, and we still have a lower testing rate, but encourage folks to please continue to get tested. This is, remember, the variants are more easily transmittable and often thought to be possibly more deadly than the first strain of COVID-19 that we encountered. Here are some locations. We continue to get calls about testing. We have locations at the Jim Miller site through the Miko group that offers testing. And so there's a lot of other private groups that offer testing. We've had some of our other locations are going to convert to vaccination sites, and so the main site will be the Jim Miller site. Here's a snapshot of vaccinations throughout the state and throughout the county. And so you can see we're almost at 5 million vaccinations throughout Georgia and about a 17% of fully vaccination rate. Cobb is very quickly catching up, and we're up to 16% of fully vaccinated rates, and that is going up. It seems to go up pretty quickly, so that's good news. We have about 300,000 vaccines that have been administered to our county. In our Jim Miller location, we've done, in our outreach, we've done many vaccines as well, but in the district, we've done over 61,000 vaccines. So some of you, this is, you know, hot off the press, the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccination. This morning, you may have heard that the FDA has called for a pause in the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. So we have been very busy this morning trying to, you know, redo some operations that we're using the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. So this is concerns of a very rare disorders involving blood clots. What I've read so far is that it's six cases that they're looking at when, and out of, I think it was over 3 million vaccines that have been administered. And so actually, yeah, almost 7 million vaccines, I apologize, that have been administered. So there's, this is very rare, but they're stopping to take a look at it. Tomorrow, the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices will meet to take a look at this and what, if this is something that potentially is more of an issue than they thought. So I know people may be a little bit concerned about this, but I do want to reassure folks that one thing I'm very grateful for is that they are looking at the safety of this as we go along. And so when they've detected something that may be an issue, they will pause and take a look and look at all the data and take a better look at that. So this is very rare right now, and so we will just await to hear more guidance. This has been stopped, the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, throughout the state of Georgia. And so those of you that had appointments today, you may be shifted around a little bit, so I just want to make sure everybody knew about that ahead of time. So right now, it's, for us, it's mostly outreach locations, but some of our partners were using Johnson &amp; Johnson, and we're assisting them as well this morning. Okay, and I'll turn it over to Lisa Crossman.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having us again this morning. Just wanted to hit a couple of high points and reminders. So remember that in Georgia, the eligibility for vaccination is now open to everyone 16 years of age and older. Please remember that the Pfizer vaccine is the only approved vaccine that's available for children aged 16 and 17. So we do offer Pfizer at Jim Miller Park, also the GMA sites like at Mercedes-Benz, and then most Walgreens and CVS retail pharmacies are also offering Pfizer. So before you might schedule your vaccine appointment for your 16- and 17-year-old, I would just check to make sure that that site was offering Pfizer. Also, remember that across the state, individuals that are under 18 need to have their parent or legal guardian present during vaccination to give consent. We've had a couple of folks that have sent their 16- or 17-year-old who can drive over to their appointment to get vaccinations, and we do want to remind folks that we need the parent there to give consent. Next slide. As Dr. Memark mentioned, we're going strong at Jim Miller Park, and we've administered, as of yesterday, over 46,000 to date in Cobb County. We've been working primarily to focus on getting those vaccines out to our Cobb residents, although remember that you do not have to get vaccinated in your home county. You can go to any county that is convenient to you. Fortunately, we've been seeing more vaccine coming into the state and into the county, and we've been able to open up more appointments in the last two weeks. So I think that we're at about 75% of our capacity right now, but we're excited that more of the vaccine is coming into us. Next slide. I also wanted to make sure that people have this slide, and we've put this out on our social media paths and everything. We want to make it as easy as possible for our residents to find a vaccine appointment. So first of all, you can go, as you see at the top of the slide, to our CobbandDouglasPublicHealth.org. We will, it connects you to all of these other sites as well, and you can get to all of the public health sites around the state of Georgia through that path. Also, MyVaccineGeorgia.org that you see at the bottom left is the link to get to all the Georgia emergency management mass vaccination sites like at the Mercedes-Benz Stadium. And then on our DPH.Gorgia.gov is a vaccine locator where you can put in your ZIP code and be able to find any of the other locations around the state that are near you, depending on how far you prefer to drive from your home ZIP code. And then lastly, on our site, we've put the Vaccine Finder. This is a link to all retail pharmacies. So if you're interested in going to a Walgreens, or CBS, or Kroger, or Publix, you can link on that website to be able to find those locations, and they also will tell you which vaccine they're providing and if they have vaccine in stock. Next slide. We're so excited, and shout out to Cobb County Government for launching the Call Center yesterday. I'll leave that to others if they're going to be giving an update, but really, thank you so much for the support from the Board of Commissioners, from Kimberly and Communications, and from Cassie and her staff to be able to launch this. We think this is going to make such a difference in being able to answer questions for Cobb residents and to help them link to appointments and to answers for their questions. You can see the number on here. We also are pleased that we've been putting our new mobile van to work. We're doing three to four days a week now of outreach. We've partnered, if you'll go to the next slide, Dr. Memark, we've partnered with a number of groups to be able to get this out and be able to do mobile sites now that we feel that we've got our feet on the ground with our mass site at Jim Miller Park. So we have a partnership with Wellstar Health System where they're working with us with their congregational nurses, and we're going out, we began with senior centers last month, and we're now expanding out to some of our churches and shelters and other congregate living areas, and so that's going very well. We also, as you all know, we've been partnering with CORE, which is the Community Organized Relief Efforts Agency. We've been linking with them for the past eight months to do COVID testing around the community. But last week and this week, we are converting all of those testing locations to vaccination sites. So we've already begun up at KSU Brand Smart on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We already began at EpiCenter Word of Faith down in South Cobb on Wednesdays and Saturdays. And then last Friday was our first day at the St. Thomas the Apostle Catholic Church on Fridays. So we may move some of those around depending on need and offers to do some other satellites locations, but for right now, this is where we are, and we're offering vaccinations at that location to, at all of those locations as well. And then our Georgia Department of Public Health, sorry, Dr. Memark, our Georgia Department of Public Health is now offering onsite vaccinations for businesses with 500-plus employees, so we're working to support them. And then in the works, as a great opportunity to reach our homebound residents next week, we're putting things together with one of our retail pharmacists and the Air National Guard to be able to go out and do some homebound residence. All right, next. We had a lot of fun with Cobb Senior Services a couple of weeks ago where we vaccinated the Peachtree Santas, Inc., up at the North Cobb Senior Center. That was a lot of fun to get the Santas and the Mrs. Santas and their elves vaccinated. Next slide. So just key points kind of to end this up. One is to please continue to practice the prevention guidelines that we've been talking about for the past year: wearing your mask, keeping your distance, washing your hands, being careful about being in large crowds. Please, we add to that, get vaccinated when you have access to vaccines. There are more and more vaccines coming into Georgia, so that appointments are, should be much more prevalent. So, for example, last week, we released about 10,000 appointments for this week. Please, we would say, take whichever brand, you know, Moderna, Pfizer, please kind of pause on the J&amp;J for right now until we know more about that, but all of them have excellent effectiveness. And then just thank you again for launching the Call Center. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa, and again, Dr. Memark, for being with us today and providing this helpful update. Also want to thank you too, in addition to our team at IS and our Emergency Response Division for helping to put together the Call Center, and we hope that we're able to reach a population that has had difficulty getting scheduled online. But then, are there any questions from Commissioners this morning? We don't have any questions, but again, we thank you and appreciate the caution that you're asking us to still take, even though we see the rate going down. We're still not below that 100, over 100,000 threshold, so we know that we still need to be doing what we can to wear our masks, wash our hands, and watch our distance. Thank you, appreciate your time. All right, you guys have a great morning. With that, we are going to segue into our presentations. We have five presentations that will be provided this morning. The first presentation is to present a proclamation to Cobb and Douglas Public Health in recognition of National Public Health Week. So I didn't know if we wanted to keep them virtually since they were just online with us, but I think that would be fitting. Is there anyone from Cobb Douglas Public Health who's here? Okay.
Chairwoman, Dr. Memark and I are both here.
Okay, great, so we'll go ahead and we'll do this virtually. I don't know if you can see me on the screen, but we have this beautiful proclamation for you that I'll hand to you when I see you, but I think this is an opportune time for us to thank you as it is Public Health Week. Cobb and Douglas Public Health has been recognized as a leader among health districts and worked diligently to provide and protect the health and safety of our residents. It was the first health district in the state and among only 2% in the nation to achieve national accreditation from the Public Health Accreditation Board. National Public Health Week is observed the second week of April. Each year during this time, we celebrate Cobb and Douglas Public Health's devotion and compassionate staff who selflessly serve and care for our community. Over the past year, public health employees have worked tirelessly fighting the COVID-19 virus, and that is an understatement. We hereby proclaim April 5th through the 11th of 2021 as Cobb and Douglas Public Health Week and thank you for your hardworking employees and their commitment to building a healthier Cobb County. Thank you so much, Dr. Memark, Lisa Crossman, and again, all of your employees. We honor you for your sacrifice during this time, and not just yours, but that of your families. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Chairwoman, that means a lot to our staff. They'll really appreciate the support and the endorsement, and as always, we couldn't have made it through this pandemic without all of you and the staff at Cobb County Government, so thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you. And again, we'll get this off to you so you can get this in your office. Appreciate all you guys do. Thank you. Okay, so with that, we have our second presentation, which is to provide a proclamation to the District Attorney, Solicitor General, and various community-based service providers in recognition of National Crime Victims Rights Week. And I have that, that is both in person and virtual. Do we have anyone from those, okay, I see the DA's offices represented? Good, good to see everyone. Hello, hello. Why don't you guys join me up there so they can see? Commissioners, you are more than welcome to join me down here, or you can stay up there, it's your choice. I know that their work affects all of our work, so this is fitting to have all of you here today. We have a proclamation which we'd like to present to you in honor of this week being Crime Victims Rights Week. And because this is at length, I'm going to pare this down, but certainly we'll leave this to you for you to read on your own. But whereas being a victim of crime and navigating the criminal justice system can be a frightening and confusing experience, progress in improving the treatment of crime victims has been made through the efforts of thousands of victims and survivors who have turned their own experiences into a force for positive change, ensuring that others can receive justice, meaningful assistance, and compassionate treatment before the law. And whereas since the passage of the Victims of Crime Act of 1984 and through the dedicated work of advocates, lawmakers, and victim service providers, there is a growing array of services and resources available to victims and their loved ones. National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services are offered to all victims of crime. And whereas the DA's office, the Solicitor General's office, and various community-based service providers across the county are hereby dedicated to supporting victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building trust among our clients, and collaborating with other service providers, and engaging our community in response efforts. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of April 18th through the 24th of 2021 as Crime Victims Rights Week, reaffirming this county's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during this week and throughout the year. And we want to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Presented this 13th day of April of 2020. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to share anything?
We'd just like to say thank you to the round chair and the Board of Commissioners for this proclamation. We are proud to say that over in 2020, we actually provided 17,000 services to the victims in our community, and so we'd like to thank you for the help that you've provided us and the resources that you've provided us to be able to do that. Our partners who are watching on virtually all through the county, Live Safe Resources, Safe Path, we like to thank you for the services that you have provided, and we will continue to make sure that our victims' criminal justice needs are addressed and that we make sure that as going forward, that here in Cobb County, that all those things are taken care of, so that way people can come back from the dangers and the, just basically, the ill effects that the criminal justice system has against them. So we'd like to thank you once again for this proclamation.
Thank you, appreciate it. With that. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, you guys, thank you. Okay. We have our next presentation, which is to present a proclamation designating April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month, which will be provided by Commissioner Gambrell.
Thank you, and do we have them virtually? Okay. Go ahead. Okay, okay. So we would like to present this proclamation on behalf of the Board of Commissioners in recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Child abuse is a serious problem in the U.S. that occurs at all socioeconomic levels, across ethnic and cultural lines, within all religions, and at all levels of education. Every 10 seconds, a report of child abuse is made in our country, and more than four children die every day due to abuse. One in 10 children is a victim of sexual abuse before the age of 18, and 80, 90% of trafficked youth have been sexually abused prior or before they were trafficked. These are startling figures, but Safe Path Children's Advocacy Center Incorporated is here to improve lives by reducing trauma to abused children and their non-offending caregivers. Safe Path provides a comprehensive team approach to the investigation, prosecution, treatment, and prevention of all forms of child abuse. Since 1995, staff has provided about 19,200 child victims and their caregivers more than 100,000 units of service. We proclaim April Child Abuse Prevention Month and commend Safe Path for its unwavering commitment to bettering the lives of our children and building stronger families, given this day Tuesday, April 13th, 2021. Thank you.
Even though they're not here, we can still honor them. Thank you. They are all, okay, I understand.
Yes, can I talk, Kimberly?
Oh, here you are, very good. Hi, Ginger.
Hi, how are you? Good to see you all. Good morning, Chairwoman Cupid, and Commissioners, and Commissioner Gambrell, thank you so much for that honor. I actually have just about all of my staff on the virtual call this morning, who are the ones who provide those wonderful services that you mentioned and have really triumphed in protecting children in the community. Just about all of my board members are present today virtually, which is absolutely fantastic. Thank you all, I see you. I want to put a thanks to the Special Victims Unit for being partners with us, the District Attorney's Office, Department of Family and Children's Services, our funders, the community at large, and just basically Cobb County, because without Cobb County, Safe Path would not be as strong as it is. We cannot do what we do without the support of a community that puts value in protecting children, and that is the one thing that we all have in common. We were all children, and you can't take that away. Those of us who have good childhoods, supportive parents, supportive community members, end up being grown tax- up being grown taxpayers in the community, making a difference today and forever. So thank you very much. I would like to mention that my board president, Dan Cushing, is on virtually, and if he would like to say a few minutes, a few words, I'd greatly appreciate it. Dan, are you still on today?
I am, Ginger. And on behalf of Safe Path and the board, Ginger, you summed it up perfectly, and we are just very honored today to be able to be receiving this proclamation. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, and thank you, staff and commissioners, for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do in serving children and families. Very good. We now have another virtual presentation to present a proclamation designating April 18th through the 24th as National Infertility Awareness Week in Cobb County, and that will be provided by Commissioner Richardson.
All right. Hello. Do we have, do we have our honorees on the screen on virtual? Okay. I just want to make sure they're there. All right, so this is the beautiful proclamation for the group, the National Infertility Association, and all of the work that they do. So according to the CDC, one in eight couples have trouble getting pregnant or sustaining a pregnancy, and as a result, this particular organization has dedicated their time to eliminating or diminishing those barriers that these families face, because every family has a, every person has a right to build a family. So by providing those family-building options, which include adoption, medical treatment, access to in vitro fertilization, and third-party reproduction, and to help reduce some of those costs because of the lack of insurance coverage, this group really focuses on making sure that we raise awareness around the issue and help provide those options. So just really appreciate the effort and the time put into this particular issue, and that we are proclaiming, recognizing that work, and recognizing the volunteers, the healthcare professionals, the members of the infertility and family-building community, and hereby proclaim April 18th through 24th, next week, National Infertility Awareness Week in Cobb County, presented today, April 13th, 2021.
And Vilma's on the lawn, if she'd like to say a few words.
Absolutely.
Hi, good morning. Thank you so much, Commissioner Richardson, and Chairwoman, and everybody else on the Commission. I am very excited to be receiving this proclamation. On behalf of Resolve, the National Fertility Association, and even more so on behalf of myself as a Cobb County resident, I have struggled with infertility, and the only way I was able to have children was with the help of IVF treatments. So I fully understand the emotional and the financial toll that infertility can take on men and women. So this is a very dear issue to me and to many residents in Cobb County. It's such an issue that most of the time, it's a taboo, we don't talk about it. So building awareness and recognition that this is a problem, and that we need to provide adequate insurance coverage to those struggling with infertility is very important. So I truly appreciate this proclamation very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vilma and Commissioner Richardson. Our final presentation is to present a proclamation recognizing 50 years of service to Cobb County Fire and Emergency Services. Anyone who's here with Cobb Fire, please feel free to come join us up here so we can recognize you. Do y'all want to come down?
Good morning, everyone. I am going to present a proclamation with the help of my colleagues here to the Cobb County Fire Department. They are celebrating 50 years of service to Cobb County, and we could never thank them enough for all that they do for us. So whereas in 1955, Georgia adopted legislation to create fire districts in counties, in Cobb County, fire districts would be financed by levying a tax on property owners protected in each. By 1964, eight districts had been established covering the entire county, except the cities of Marietta, Smyrna, and Austell. Each district was governed by a five-member Board of Fire Masters. And whereas the first fire district in Cobb County was the South Cobb Fire District under Chief Jim Dunn, taking the place of the volunteer Mabelton Fire Department. And whereas the combining of the eight fire districts to form Cobb County Fire and Emergency Services became official on January 24th, 1971. By a resolution of the Cobb Board of Commissioners, when Chief David Hilton was appointed Fire Chief by Commission Chair Ernest Barrett. And whereas on January 24th, 2021, Cobb County Fire and Emergency Services celebrated five decades of dedicated service as a paid career fire department. Under the leadership of Chief Bill Johnson, there are 794 approved positions, 29 fire stations, a Cobb County Fire, a Cobb County Safety Village, and a dedicated fire recruit training academy. The department serves more than 757,000 residents who reside within the county's 345-square-mile territory. Now therefore, we the Cobb County Board of Commissioners do hereby honor Cobb County Fire and Emergency Services for 50 years of dedicated service. We ask the residents of Cobb to join us in celebrating 50 years of heroism and an appreciation for all who served unselfishly to save lives. This is the 13th day of April, 2021. Okay, I'm looking to my computer. Okay, I was just going to say something first. These, these men and women of the fire department are our heroes. They save lives every day, day in and day out, put their lives at risk, and we could never, we can never thank them enough and let them know our gratitude for all that they do for Cobb and their families' sacrifice, too. Bill's going to go first.
Our fire chief.
Go ahead, Director. I'll let you have it.
You want to say something?
First of all, I just want to say thanks to the board for taking this opportunity to recognize Cobb Fire and for the history that Commissioner Burrow shared with you. I also want to say that from, from day one, when we became a countywide fire department for all the residents of unincorporated Cobb, our first chief, David Hilton, was the president of the International Fire Chiefs Association, and he also was the creator of the residential sprinkler system. And when you think about that, that is huge. And so from its initial coming a countywide fire department, the leadership of our fire department has put us on the map year after year. Becky Denlinger was the first female fire chief of a metro-sized fire department, and that means you have to have 400 members or more. And so, and then in 2017, Cobb Fire became an ISO-1, which is one of, less than 1% of all fire departments in this country have an ISO-1. And that provides the lowest insurance cost to our residents for businesses and homeowners. And then we also are an accredited agency through the Center for Public Safety Excellence. So Cobb Fire is one of the elite, and I say that very proudly, because it's something for us to be proud of. So I just wanted to give you that history, and now for a few comments from our sixth fire chief, Bill Johnson. I'll be very brief. Thank you very much, Director, and thank you, Commissioners, for doing this for us. You know, I think I speak for the four of us up here as part of our command staff, that we couldn't do what we do if it weren't for the people who laid the groundwork before us. You know, our, the people who came before us the last 50 years laid the foundation for us to have this road of success that we've had. So on behalf of myself, the command staff, I want to say thank you to those members who did that, and as well as our members who are serving today. You know, the last 15 months have just been crazy, but our members have served proficiently and professionally, and we would be remiss if we didn't recognize them and say thank you very much for what they do every day. So thank you.
And administered vaccines for employees, and did a great job.
Three, two, one, smile.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That concludes this morning's presentations. We are now moving on to our public hearings this morning. And both, I believe, are with our water department. Good morning, Judy.
Good morning, Chairwoman and Commissioners. Our first public hearing is for the employment of consulting services. They're expected to exceed $100,000 for the Windham Woods Sewer Extension Program, number S-1138.
All right. If there's anyone here for the public hearing, please feel free to come towards the top of the room. This is not public comment. This is a public hearing specific to the item that was read by our director to address the sewer extension. If you're here for the public hearing, you'll be provided three minutes to speak to this topic. Our public hearing is now open. Seeing no one here for the public hearing, our public hearing is now closed. Thank you.
Great.
And we can go to the next one.
Okay. Our second public hearing is for the employment of consultant services where fees will likely exceed $100,000 for the design services for FY21 Miscellaneous Soap Creek Sewer Repairs, program number S-275.
All right, same format. We're willing to hear from anyone with any comments with respect to this particular agenda item regarding Soap Creek Sewer Repairs. If you're here, please feel free to approach the front of the room, and you'll be provided three minutes to speak towards this matter. With that, I declare the public hearing open. Okay, seeing no one here for this item, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you, Director. All right, now moving into our public comment.
Good morning, Chairwoman. Our first public speaker this morning is Susan Medler. Meeler.
All right, and for all of our speakers here for public comment, even though your name has been stated, please restate your name when you get to the microphone. Thank you.
There's a timer on the thing. You have five minutes. The timer counts down.
Good morning. My name is Susan Meeler, and I have been a Cobb County resident close to two and a half years. I'm also a Thrive participant, and I thank Ms. Delancy for giving me the opportunity to participate in the program. One of the main objectives in the Thrive program is to go to our local meetings and make our voices heard, since local ordinances and our decisions affect all residents located in their specific counties. I stand before you to present an issue that I am facing, but others who receive the Marietta Housing Voucher, AKA Section 8 voucher, who reside in the Zour and Riverside apartment complex will face also. I received a notice from office management that was stuck on my door stating that they are phasing out participation in the Marietta housing program, and that I have to be moved out of my apartment by May 31st, 2021. It's bad enough that I have to worry about COVID-19 and now searching for affordable housing that may or may not be available. This places undue burden upon my daughter, her two-year-old son, as well as myself, since we all reside together. I know that many other MHA participants who reside in the Zour complex in Austell will face the exact, exact same thing once their leases are up. I have to state that no one wants to face homelessness. Another issue is finding adequate housing that accepts the voucher, but unfortunately, due to many apartment complexes and landlords not desiring participation regarding the MHA voucher program, that decreases the number of rentals out there for voucher participants. If Section 8 participants cannot find housing in the specified timeframe listed on their voucher, they could lose his or her voucher altogether. I hope that the housing issue here in Cobb County is addressed and taken seriously. If one does not have a roof over their head, a person can face other issues such as depression, anxiety, et cetera, along with facing homelessness. I again reiterate that the lack of affordable, adequate housing here in the county is detrimental in assisting its taxpayer, excuse me, its tax-paying low-income residents. I appreciate your time and cooperation regarding my concern. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Julia Pitchen.
I'm happy to be in Cobb County now. I've been here only a few months. Since I've been here, I've really enjoyed being in the Thrive family and in our community. I'm looking and seeing so much out here. What I've noticed since I've been out here is there's a lot of support in our community. And what I'm not seeing, and since I became pregnant, I'm currently 19-week pregnant, is there not much support for the pregnant people in the community. With COVID going down and a lot of things becoming more open and available, there is still not support for the pregnant people. We still are forced to go to appointments alone. I done had to reschedule many appointments because I have her, and my boyfriend done have to miss days of work and take off to watch her, and if my older two children are off of school. You would think that they would have it where at least one person could come with you, or since under two, aren't even forced to wear a mask, that they would be okay with them. I don't, I have one sister out here, but she is on disability and can't really help me too much, so I can't force her or burden her with watching my children. So I really have to bring her with me. Even during the pregnancy, they were told that the father can only come to one ultrasound appointment, which is the 20 weeks, but because I'm high-risk, and I now go to the high-risk ultrasound appointment, they don't allow any visitors ever for none of these. So now, this is his first child, and he has yet to see an ultrasound. He can't go to any doctor's appointment, and since I didn't have this support with my other three kids, having someone who wants to be there and he's not able to is really hurtful. And I just feel with COVID, COVID going down, that they should be changing the rights for the pregnant people as well. Let them have, I mean, I could go to the store with all my children. We all could be here, all of us. We can go to the park, and many of us, they have gatherings. So why is it for the pregnant people who need the most support, especially the high-risk ones, we have to do this by ourselves? We should have someone there to help us, more so if someone is willing to help us. This little one here, she's always with me. She's two. So she can't, she's not in daycare because I don't work, so she stays home with me. And they tell me I can't bring her. That's like here, if y'all would have said I couldn't bring her, I wouldn't be able to speak right now. I wouldn't be able to let y'all know my concerns. If they told me I can't go to Walmart because I have a child, I wouldn't be able to bring her and go shopping. I would have to wait till he get off in the evening for everything. Doctors, officers, I can't make a 4 o'clock appointment. They're closed. I can't wait till he gets off of work. So I feel they should really look into opening up the medical field like they have with everything else. They're opening up movie theaters and all these entertainment places, but the medical field, which is the most necessary, we have no choice. We have to see the doctors. They're not open, and I think they should be, and look more into that as we go further along. Thank you.
Monica Delancy.
My name's Monica Delancy, Riverside community. Before we get started today, I want to do a moment of silence for Deontay Wright and all mothers raising black thumbs. for Deontay Wright and all mothers raising black thumbs. Thank you. First, I would like to talk about last week. Last week, we had spring break. And at the Thrive Resource Center located at Kingsville Apartments, we were able to host a mini spring break camp. I actually cut my spring break short to make sure I was able to come back and do activities with our youth because we have to keep them engaged. We had some teens that participated in the college virtual tour at the center. The college virtual tour was hosted by Steen Inc., and this was on Wednesday. The next day, I got phone calls from teens saying, "Well, what are we doing today?" I didn't have anything planned for them on Wednesday because I had things planned for the young people. But I said, "Well, if you're looking for something to do and you don't mind doing the community cleanup, you could come and help do a community cleanup." So I had a couple of young men that did come and participate. Thank you to Mr. Barry Kreis for, you know, bringing the bags quickly as possible. But that dawned on me that if you give something for youth to do, they will participate. They don't want to be sitting at home. They don't want to be just being idle. So if I have to give up my spring break to make sure that our teens, our young people are doing something, I will continue to do that. And so now we're getting, making plans for summertime. I'm going to also get some school updates. We have some wins. Riverside Elementary School, which is located in Maperton, Georgia, the principal Cynthia Winter, she gave a report yesterday, part of her meeting, and stated that they had two students that won first place countywide in a writing contest for Cobb County. One was a kindergartner and one was a fifth-grade student. So I want to make sure I acknowledge that. Lenny's 6th Grade Middle School, Principal Denise McGee, received an award for increasing academics for Title I students. So I want to recognize Lenny Middle School. And also, Pearl Brook High School will host their program this week for young men, which would be called a "Hello Up" series to encourage our young men to be raised and be productive citizens. So I also want to acknowledge that. And Principal Daniel Childs is a principal of Pearl Brook High School. This Sunday, we Thriving Riverside Rents Association will host a virtual Zoom civic engagement workshop at 5:00 p.m. where we give a chance for residents to call in and listen about civic engagement. Not only do they call in and find out resources, but this Sunday is going to theme civic engagement. This Sunday is April 18. And then April 25 will be our Reed to Seed Global Youth Service Day Project. April 18, the weekend, April 22 to 25 is Global Youth Service Day. In addition, I'm going to take this time to remind you about rental assistance that's needed beyond the pandemic. I want to remind you that people are taking advantage and applying for different agencies. Some are being told that they have appointments. Their appointment's about a month out. They are being told to communicate with their landlords about their appointments, but their appointments are about a month out. But again, thank you for the assistance, but I'm going to remind you that we're going to have to have some solutions in place beyond the assistance runs out. So thank you for this time. Monica Delancey.
Christine Rosman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Christine Rosman. I know many of you because of the, being with the Cobb Elder Abuse Task Force for five years prior to going into the DA's office, doing the community outreach and being, you know, having our World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, Cobb Elder Abuse Awareness Day. I have been a Cobb County resident off and on since 1996. Three years, four, three years I lived in Minneapolis, and that was like 15 years ago. And it, I can't tell you how it saddens me. It was the most beautiful city I'd ever been in, safest city I'd ever been in. The, you've heard of Minnesota nice, everybody kind, lovely. And to see what has happened to that city scares the hell out of me because what happened to that city was entrusting their city council persons to vote in integrity, to vote for things that they felt reflected the values of the constituents, their constituents. And when you, when they chose to defund the police, I mean, I know that there's a lot going on there, believe me. But choosing to defund the police has wreaked havoc on that city, on that state. And I, there's no way I would ever go back there now. Maybe to see my friends. But I spent years cycling by myself on the city paths that they had going all through the city, downtown, by myself. I would not even consider doing such a thing now. And that happened pretty quickly. And I love Cobb County. I don't want that to happen to our county. And so, and I know that there are things that are upon us. There are not only thousands, not only tens of thousands, but hundreds of thousands of illegal immigrants coming over our border. They're not all going to stay in Arizona. They're not all going to stay in Texas or California, and they are going to be upon us. The ladies that presented prior to me, they're feeling the pinch already of what they're expecting from their county. I'm putting it out there to you all is what are you going to be doing to prepare us for the influx of people that are going to be coming into our county? Illegals. And from what I understand is that Sheriff Owens is not going to be working with ICE. So if somebody breaks the law that is an illegal and that isn't going to get, that information isn't going to get transferred to ICE. It's going to have a direct impact on this beautiful county of ours. And I truly hope that, as you're looking at this, that we have things in place. Let me see if there's anything else. I just, yeah. I mean, we're at a crossroads now. And I do ask that you all put our values in mind when you're making decisions on behalf of us. I know you all get along well. It's beautiful. It's like, wow, what synergy everybody has. I'm surprised that we don't have more people here. I think that citizens are starting to realize that, like, what's going on? We're losing our country. We're losing our county. What the heck is happening? And, you know, I've been around since the days of questioning what the heck was going on with the Commissioners and Tim Lee making decisions on behalf of us and kind of hijacking Cobb County and saying, "Hey, we're getting the Braves." And it was like, it's not that I didn't want the Braves, but how did you vet it? Was it vetted? And now, because I knew, I mean, in my gut, I knew things aren't always going to be fat and happy and lots of cash coming in. And now it's really impacting us. It's impacting all the workers that would have been working for the Major League Baseball that was coming through and now Delta and Coca-Cola.
Ms. Rosman, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Thank you for your time. I'm Christine Rosman. Thank you.
Larry Leroy Emkin.
Can I sign up? My wife signed me up. I didn't even know she did that. So I'll make it quick and dirty. Pleasant. Leroy Emkin will live in Cobb County. I've been in Cobb County since 2000. And let me say that if the Board of Commissioners, in any of your meetings, in any of your decisions, decide to defund police any amount, you're going to find the citizens of this county voting you out of office. The safety of our citizens depends on the law enforcement, including the fire agencies of this county, to provide the safety for all of our citizens. And it's unacceptable to do what many other counties around this country has done. I am involved in a project called Project Thin Blue Line. And we're going to be developing large groups of people who will be supporting this effort to assure that you, the Board of Commissioners, under no circumstances defund the police by any amount, but rather fund the police, increase the funding of police and fire to meet their needs, their staff needs, their facilities needs, their training requirements. We have some of the best law enforcement in the country, not just the state, in the country. Many of our law enforcement individuals are taken away by federal agencies, the CIA, the FBI, and others because of the training and the quality of the law enforcement we have here in Cobb County. We are recognized nationwide to have some of the best law enforcement and fire, and you've heard some of that today with the resolutions that you presented. We've also heard that you, the Board of Commissioners, have been considering the possibility of reducing funding of police. Unacceptable. You are supposed to represent the needs of the citizens of this county? We expect you to adequately fund law enforcement and fire, and that's going to require an increase in their budgets, not a decrease. Your jobs will depend upon what you do. We, the citizens, will vote you out of office if we see anything other than increasing the funding of our law enforcement and our fire agencies. Thank you.
Christine Solomson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Christine Solomson, and I was here speaking before you back in February for eviction. And I went to court, back to court for eviction on April 9, and I was evicted. I have seven days. So come Friday, I have to have a place to live. When I was here last, I was able to get approved through Home Savers. Monica's help and others, Ernest Davis helped me push my application through, and I was approved for my rental assistance. But my landlord decided she didn't want the money. She wanted me out. For whatever reason, moving forward, not knowing if I'd be able to continue to pay that rent, she said, "I'm going to forego the money. I want her out." And so the judge gave me seven days last Friday. So since then, I have looked in Cobb County, and there is no affordable housing for a single mom. The rent for a one-bedroom is anywhere from $1,000 to $1,600. It is a money grab, cash grab. These people are increasing the rent so exorbitantly that we cannot afford to live. I work in Cobb County. Now, if I can't find a place to live, and I'm working, where am I supposed to go other than outside of Cobb County? So my question here today is, does this rental assistance help those that need to relocate into another county? Because I certainly can't afford to live here anymore. And I know that I'm not the only one. I know that there are so many people. And then another point is that the apartments that are, that I went to look at, that I might be able to afford, they're not renting till June or July, and they said there's such a long waitlist that you're looking into November or December before I could get into a place. What do I do till then? Live in my car with my daughter? I mean, you all have homes. We don't have homes. I'm trying to work. Where do I shower? Where do I get changed? What do I do? So I need help. I need to know if these resources are, I've been approved. I have the hardship. Does that carry over to help relocate me to another place, another home? I'm working. I'm willing to do my part, but I need some help. So I need to know what to do from here. I need to know who to talk to and find out what I do. I have found other places in other counties, Douglas and Carroll, that is more affordable. Yes, I'd have to drive a lot further to work, but I'm willing to make the travel if I can just get something to get relocated and get into another place for the next several months so I can. I'm starting over, but I'm starting way behind. I'm not even starting at ground level or on the level playing field. I am starting over way behind. And my landlord wants to go after me for that rent personally. So I'm going to be way behind. So I just need some help, and I'd appreciate anything that you guys can push through to help those that need to relocate to other areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairwoman, that concludes the first section of this public speakers this morning.
Thank you. Bill, can you provide, how many speakers do we have for the second public comment?
At this point, just one additional speaker has signed up.
Okay, thank you. With that, we're going to move into our consent agenda, and I just want to provide just a general message for those who did speak at public comment that as a board, we've adopted an informal policy to not respond to each public comment. There are some matters where it can get out of hand, and it does skew our response for those who may be looking for a response and may not get it. But we hear each and every one of you. We do have your contact information. When some are done speaking, I've seen at times assistants go up and approach persons, which they will do if they know that your matter needs follow-up and it's in their district. Sometimes we have staff that does the same. But I do want to let all of you know that we do have your information on hand, and we do have the ability to follow up with you and also want to encourage you to make sure that we have your appropriate information when you signed in so that we can connect with you. With that, we're going to move into our consent agenda. Prior to the meeting and also following the meeting, the items on our consent agenda have been scrolled on the screen. In the interest of time, we will not have those scrolled when we approve it. However, we will go ahead and have a vote to approve all of these items collectively. So with that, is there a Commissioner willing to make a motion to approve the consent agenda today and authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving our consent agenda, please raise your hand. The consent agenda is approved, 5-0, with no one in opposition. We will move on to our regular agenda. Bear with me. The next item is our Board of Commissioners tabs, item 39. And the motion is to approve a resolution for the Board of Commissioners' appointment process. Or, excuse me, the purpose of this is to approve a resolution for the Board of Commissioners' appointment process to the Development Authority of Cobb County. to the Development Authority of Cobb County. By way of background, on March 13, 1973, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, by resolution, declared a need for a Development Authority and activated its state-created authority in the county pursuant to OCGA 36-62-4A and C. Pursuant to that code, a county or municipal development authority shall consist of a board of not less than seven and not more than nine directors. Pursuant to the March 13, 1973 Resolution of the Board of Commissioners, the Development Authority of Cobb County shall have seven members elected by the Board of Commissioners. For clarity going forward, each member of the board shall have an individual appointment, and the remaining two appointments shall be mutually agreed upon by the board. All appointments are to be voted on and approved by a majority of the board at a public meeting. There has been a resolution that each of the commissioners have. Does each of you have a revised copy with the post? So my motion is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a resolution for the Board of Commissioners' appointment process to the Development Authority of Cobb County as revised and to authorize the chairwoman to execute any necessary documents. Is there a second? Any discussion? Yes.
This resolution is to approve the process.
Yes.
And so as far as the three appointments that are expired or are up now, and we have who is designated, if it's district or chair or at-large, full board, when... What is the process for bringing nominations forward for those positions?
It would be similar to when we have other expired positions on the board. So I don't have the dates in front of me of those expiring positions. I did see some correspondence this morning that stated the date of the expiration of each of those positions.
There's three that expired last year.
Okay. So it is my understanding that if a board has been... Excuse me, if a board position has expired, that you have the ability to bring it forward.
So would that be... Can we fill out a card and submit a resume for the next board meeting?
I don't perceive... Why not?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Gambrell?
And to add on to what Commissioner Burrell said, while this resolution specifies appointment, it is a result of failed or lacking communication and clarity which was sought as to how the commissioners are to submit a name for consideration and the process to which the nominations will be reviewed. Therefore, I'm unable to support this resolution as it does not reflect the complete process that is required and is still under question by other members of this board.
Thank you. Is there further discussion or questions? Okay, all of those in favor of supporting the resolution, please raise your hand. All of those who are opposed to the motion, please raise your hand. All right, the motion carries 4-1 with Commissioner Gambrell in opposition. Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item Number 40.
Good morning, Chairwoman.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Manager. Our item this morning is for the board to authorize funding for non-recurring FY 2021 expenditures within the General Fund and the Fire Fund. Previous Agenda items were approved by the board advancing General Fund and Fire Fund dollars to seven 2016 SPOLOX projects in order to adequately fund these projects in a timely manner with the obligation to reimburse the General Fund. On March 9th, the Board of Commissioners allocated revenue above projections for the 2016 SPOLOX program, which allowed these loaned funds to be returned to the General Fund. During your retreat back in January, multiple priorities of the board were discussed by staff and by board members. So we're asking that a portion of the funds returned to the General Fund and the Fire Fund be allowed to address some of those priorities. To help address employee retention, we ask that a 3% one-time incentive payment be awarded to all non-sworn full-time and regular-part-time employees. This payment would not have a negative impact on our pension program or future budgets. To address... Excuse me, to address the county's aging infrastructure, we ask that $3.5 million be placed into a capital maintenance contingency at which departments would suggest requests for capital improvements, and $4 million be allocated to the failing courthouse and detention security system. Other priorities that would be addressed by approval of this Agenda item include increased funding for cybersecurity, the rewriting of the county zoning ordinances and development regulations, a performance review to identify contractual or operational savings, the development of the county strategic plan, and then the replacement of aging network infrastructure of switches and phones in our system. Along with the 3% one-time incentive payment for non-sworn fire personnel, the funds returned to the Fire Fund would purchase four engines and one aerial apparatus. These replacements would make up for the department's inability to maintain their cyclic replacement last year and this year. Other than the 3% one-time incentive, each of the other projects will be brought back before the board for review and approval. Of course, I'm available to answer any of your questions, but first, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the recommended funding of non-recurring expenditures in FY 2021, approve a one-time non-cumulative payment in the April 23, 2021 payroll to all non-sworn full-time and all part-time employees in the amount of 3% of their annualized salary who were employed as of October 1, 2020. Authorize the appropriation of funding for one-time improvements, approve the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
All right. So moved as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We will move on to our next Agenda item to be presented by our District Attorney, which is Agenda Item Number 41. Excuse me, if there's someone here with property management, the air is extremely cold back where the commissioners are seated. Yes. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you. The purpose of this Agenda item is to authorize the creation of two Assistant District Attorneys, two legal administrative specialists, two investigators, and one criminal intelligence analyst. The pandemic has impacted our office in the Cobb judiciary system and judicial systems across the nation. In particular, the criminal justice system relies on... We rely on to protect the rights of all Cobb citizens has been dramatically affected. The closing of the court system for all hearings other than the most essential matters has delayed not only the ability to efficiently process cases through the criminal justice system, but it's also created enormous backlog of cases yet to even enter the process. In 2020, the average number of cases that we were able to close was cut in half from prior years. And so that means if we have the same number of cases that we normally get in 2021, that's going to cause us to have a backlog up to 9,000 cases that we need to take care of. And you've heard many people earlier today with their public comments talk about the situation between COVID and what is done to them. The criminal justice system is just as bad. When people enter our criminal justice system, the first thought is that they're innocent until proven guilty. And part of the things that we're trying to do in that regard is to make sure that the economic consequences of the criminal justice system affect as few people as possible, and we minimize the effect on those that it does affect. And that's why we're asking for these positions. The backlog is going to take us two to three years to clear, and most of that backlog is the most dangerous cases. The victims that we talked about earlier for the National Crime Victims Rights Week are those people who are waiting on justice to occur. And as long as we don't have the resources to do that, they will sit and wait until we can bring them to court, the defendants, to court to address their issues. And then all we're doing there is making sure that that person lives through that trauma more than once, more than twice, sometimes three or four times, because we don't have the resources to efficiently move them through the system. The funding for the remainder of this year will be from a General Fund fund balance appropriation for prior year CARES Act reimbursements for the fiscal year 2021 District Attorney budget. The continuation of these positions will be considered in our fiscal year 22 budget request at an annual cost of $690,000. The current ask is $275,000. That's $265,461.39 in salaries and $10,500 in general office supplies for those newcomers. We're asking the Board of Commissioners to authorize the creation of two District Attorney positions, Grade 22, two legal administrative positions, Grade 13, two investigative positions, Grade S 104, and one criminal intelligence analyst, Grade 14, for the remainder of fiscal year 2021. And we authorize a fund balance appropriation in the amount of $275,961.39 and authorize corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Burrell.
In the revised sheet that we got, the Grade 22 was crossed out, and it says legislative. And I know you mentioned Grade 22, so I just want to be clear.
I don't believe we have the ability to designate legislative slots, Your Honor.
I'm sorry, it says legislative too.
Okay. Apparently, that was a recommendation from the Human Resource Director, and that's why that change was made.
Okay. But it's still coming out of our general...
It's still coming out of our budget, yes, Your Honor.
Okay. There's been a lot of discussion about this, and we've had one-on-one talks about it with your staff. And initially, when it came before us, you know, we asked that you wait till the budget year. Now that we know that the CARES Act money unrestricted in the General Fund will be covering this through the end of the fiscal year, you will have to come back to have us consider these positions for the 2022 budget.
And we fully understand.
So these are more or less temporary. My request would be that... I know at work session yesterday, the chairwoman asked staff, county manager, to look into, I guess, direct CARES Act money moving forward. But if this is eligible, I would ask that we extend the funding to the end of the calendar year because whether it gets approved or not, if it does get approved for the 2022 fiscal year, that would give us a few months of funding through CARES Act that won't impact the full budget.
Yes.
So I'm just asking if that could be considered, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So what I'm hearing is a consideration to add to this motion that should we find that this request is eligible for CARES funding, and if CARES funding is utilized for this request, that the funding be applied to the end of the calendar year. That's my understanding of what you're requesting, Commissioner? Okay. So that would modify this Agenda item? I don't know if the motion would need to be modified. Well, this is just a consideration.
It is a consideration.
It's not necessarily modifying any fiscal impact of what we're doing with this Agenda item. This is just saying, in the future, should we find that it's CARES Act eligible. So it has to come back anyway. We would know by then. So it may be helpful for the clerk to add a note of that effect, that Commissioner Burrell provided that statement for consideration. Okay, let me... Hold on, Commissioner Gambrell. Let me see if there's a response to that request.
Chairwoman, Commissioners, we just want to clarify, because we also have an Agenda later on in this meeting to close out the CARES Act funding. So we're going to be sending any remaining funds back towards reverse public safety salaries. So that's where... That would create an issue if we extended this to December, and we may need to modify that Agenda item if we're going to go this direction. What I would maybe offer as a suggestion is that we will continue to seek reimbursements because we do know we're going to have a second round of funding for the American Recovery. We haven't received that guidance yet, but that would be another option. But again, once those funds are received and that guidance is released, we would be happy to bring that back if this was eligible.
Thank you. And that was shared yesterday for us to just say if it's eligible for reimbursement and not specify that CARES because we're closing out that program. Leila, if you can help us with that modification, that'd be helpful. Thank you for clarifications, everyone.
Thank you.
If consensus, we seem to be okay with that modification. Commissioner Gambrell, you have a comment or question?
Yes, and I know Bill just answered this question. It's the current CARES funding does not... This is not an eligible reimbursable expense under the current CARES funding, correct?
And Commissioner, I think the conservative view that finance is taken, they think it's not eligible. But I think one of the things that we can continue to forget is that the District Attorney is public safety, and our goal is to ensure that this county is safe as possible through the administration of the criminal justice system. And I think when they do the research further or ask someone, that they will find out that we are eligible for this money, especially when we're using it to pare down the results of the pandemic and especially to address the needs of our victims and our offenders who are in the criminal justice system, like I've said before, who are innocent and proven guilty.
So I would like to ask the county attorney or attorney, Deborah Blair. I know you've worked a lot on this. You've done a lot of research. From what you know, is this an eligible reimbursement under the $132 million CARES funding that we received last year?
Currently... I'm sorry, Debbie.
I didn't know if you knew she was here.
I think they're finally done with the Treasury guidance, and we provided this to the board. I provided this to District Attorney Flynn yesterday as well. The Treasury is asked to be substantially dedicated to mitigating COVID, and they've specifically identified that public safety employees can be, but they've limited the definition of public safety employees to just police officers, including state police officers, sheriffs, deputy sheriffs, firefighters, and emergency medical responders, correctional officers, and detention officers. And I'm well aware of the role that the District Attorney plays in the position of public safety. But the current guidance we have, it doesn't. He's not included in that category. But for the board's decision today, because of the later Agenda item that's going to move this over to funding for balance, we've taken... The funds are theirs, whether the board just wants to dedicate them or not. With the CARES Act money, you have more strings. This would not be eligible in additional fund balance because of the prior movements to CARES. You have funding that does not have those strings attached to it regarding the Treasury guidelines.
Well, in light of that discussion, again, I think the clause to add that if this becomes eligible for reimbursement, we will seek that funding, I think helps to cover the... Any possibility, even if it's through the new program.
In the new program, the guidance has not come out on it yet, and we haven't even received the money yet. But as it plays out, obviously, if there is additional possibility for that, we would pursue it, yes.
Certainly. It's possible. We don't know yet, but it could be eligible based off of this discussion. I received that. Yes, Commissioner Richardson?
I was going to say, I believe in work session, we did have that, at least consensus, that we would include that language in this Agenda about reimbursement under further consideration with any kind of new grants or funding that are awarded to the county, that that be reimbursed.
Yep. I agree. Commissioner Burrow?
Um, when are jury trials and magis- evictions and all that going to start back?
Evictions have already started back. Jury trials will start 19th of April, so next Monday.
Okay. And, and you can get these positions in place by the first amendment?
We are expecting to be able to have the positions filled by May 17.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sheffield, do you have any? Yes.
I was just going to add that when we amended, if we would also include, and perhaps this has already been agreed upon, that we include that we will seek reimbursement to also include the, the rescue fund.
Yes, I think we just kept it open to consider reimbursement, which would allow us to seek reimbursement through any fund that could, could assist. But that does include, yes, the rescue plan. Yes.
So essentially, this board is setting us up for another 30, 60, 90 million dollar deficit because we are taking CARES funds that were given to us to essentially mitigate the impact of COVID. Yes, we did do some programs that did that. Yes, the county received funds that we really didn't need. We didn't need the funds because we had them budgeted to cover our public safety salaries, which is now rolled over into this fund balance. So the shell game that this board likes to play to now essentially spend more money that technically we don't have and we should have given back. If we didn't need that $132 million to truly mitigate the COVID, then we should have sent it back to the federal government. So again, here we are, setting us up for another 30, 60, 90 million dollar deficit, and I cannot support it.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm just going to mention some names and tell you why this is important for what we're trying to do. The first one is Kivol Wingo. Mr. Wingo was arrested for drug possession and died within four days of being in custody. Stephen Davis was arrested for suspended license, died while he was in custody. Bradley Emery was arrested for possession of marijuana, died while he was in custody. Jesse Miles was arrested for possession of marijuana, died while he was in custody. The programs that we're trying to put in place, doing the things the right way, would have eliminated those deaths in our jail because those individuals would have been placed back in the community, back to their jobs, back to their homes, where they could have sought proper medical care. What we're trying to do is take from two to three years and reduce it down to 90 to 100 days to stay people have in our criminal justice system. What that does, it impacts our community because we get people to treatment and care quicker, reducing recidivism rates, making our community safer. We have over 3,000 victims awaiting their day in court. But without the resources to provide that opportunity, I said this before, they will live over and over the trauma of their case. The money that we're asking for, for these positions, is to help us to reduce that timeframe, to make sure that everyone is restored back to the community that should be restored back to the community, especially our victims, many of whom who live in your district, Commissioner Gamble. So we're telling you right now that this is not something that we take lightly. It is our job to make sure that criminal justice is equal and equitable here in this county. And I can't do that without the resources to make it happen. Unfortunately for me, I have to come before you to ask for those resources. But this community depends on you to provide those resources to make sure that we take care of them, to make this the best county in Georgia throughout this nation. But if we don't get those resources, everyone is affected. Our public safety is affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I would like to.
Go ahead.
Yes, I will. We have had extensive debate regarding this matter before this meeting and during this meeting. Unless there's going to be continued, unless we're going to move the dialogue further beyond reiterating the same points, I ask that we vote the way that we are convicted to vote on this matter. There's certainly differences of opinion of all of us on this board with respect to how we approach the backlog that we have in our court system. I would just ask that further dialogue, keep our citizens in mind first. We know we have a fiscal responsibility to this county. We also have a responsibility to keep this county safe. Please, let's not forget the citizen in mind as we are debating one another, and let's not forget who we are as leaders who are entrusted in keeping our citizen and our county safe. So with that, I have two additional commissioners who want to speak. Please be mindful of that, and let's constructively move this dialogue forward. And again, if we're going to continue to reiterate the same comments, I would just ask that we consider, does that help to move this forward so that we can address the agenda item as presented and adjust, address the citizens of this county and keeping them safe? With that, because Commissioner Sheffield, you haven't spoken? Oh, you have. I'm going to have you speak, and then I'm going to have Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted Bill to come up and share with us how the funds are being moved. And I'm, I'm good at playing many games, but a shell game is not one of them. And I also like for you to share with us the dollar amount, because I'm hearing 30, 60, and 90 million dollars in debt, and I'm not sure where those numbers are coming from. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Great question. All right. So where these dollars originated from were for CARES, okay? The CARES funds, as, as the County Attorney shared with us earlier, was eligible, eligible expense of those funds was for public safety, PD, sheriff, and fire, and so on. We even limited those further to be more conservative to say first responders. So we did, took a very conservative approach. We vetted it through the County Attorney's Office, our auditors as well. And we just used that as an eligible expense and sent that back to the general fund and fire funds and 911 funds in previous years. That then, because those monies were sent over, they rolled into fund balance. Because we've already checked the CARES eligibility box, those funds are now unobligated and can be used at the board's discretion because we already met that criteria. So that's what we're doing here. As part of that fund balance that we had generated was because we were able to reimburse for salaries that we previously budgeted, and they are now in the fund balance. And we're bringing this back forward as a specific item for the board's consideration to fund the DA's request, which is, again, not CARES eligible per the guidance. However, we've already met that criteria, and these funds are now unobligated and no strings attached to these. So that's what we're doing here. As far as a deficit, these are monies that we were not counting on pre-budgeted. So this is not creating a deficit in any way, shape, or form. We sent revenue over to the general fund. It rolled into fund balance, and we're using it. And as this agenda item states, it's only through September. So there's no ongoing obligation unless the board chooses to make that part of the 22 budget process. At that point, that would have to be funded by reoccurring revenues. We do not adopt an unbalanced budget. That's not something we do. It's got to be part of the sustainable process. So this would not create a deficit in any way, shape, or form. The only way that would happen is if the board decided in FY '22 they wanted to adopt an unbalanced budget, meaning they're going to use savings account money to fund recurring expenses, which is something we would strongly encourage you not to do.
Thank you for that explanation for the benefit of those that are in attendance and are also watching. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Gamble?
So I understand DA Brody's request. What about courtrooms? What about, what about judges? What about everything else to help process your cases through quicker? That's not being addressed here. So again, until you get that backlog addressed or how you're going to handle that, you're still not going to be able to move cases through further, which again, is going to be another expense that the board will have to consider. So I am looking down ahead in the future, even though you might not think that way. You know, I understand your request. In order to process all your cases, we have to have other individuals and other means, i.e. courtrooms, which we have heard that are in short demand as well. You know, how are we going to start addressing that as well? Which again, will be a financial request to this board.
I will share this in response, and then I will move our motion forward. I was actually in a room with DA Brody and our judges, and they were in support of, of this program. And they spoke about how they will help to assist this because they recognize the need to address the backlog within our system. So just because they haven't come before us does not necessarily imply that those conversations have not occurred and that they are not making room within, within each of their offices to facilitate this. It is of grave concern that we have a number of citizens who are waiting for justice, who have been victims of crime, as much as it's of grave concern that we have people in our system who are waiting to have their day of court. And for those, again, you cannot put a monetary amount of the impact that that has on people, their lives in the community. But I assure you that it is significant and weighty enough for us to have asked the DA to come back. This is the second time the DA has been before us. We considered his request before. We were concerned about where the funds would come from. He is back out of our requests because this was important to us. And I appreciate that. I appreciate your diligence to follow the funding. We have also followed the funding too, which is why we feel confident in how this has come back before us. I don't want to make the DA seem unique in his request because there have been other instances where the county has received funds and where funds have been returned to the general fund and have been used for fund balance. And so this is a process that we have utilized when we are fortunate to be able to receive funding that helps us to offset our tip, our, our budget. So with that, I'm supportive of this. I think that using the word a shell game is not the appropriate way to identify us being responsive to the additional funds that we have received, that we have legally been able to use to offset our expenses related to COVID. What it does allow us to do is to be more responsive to a lot of need that we have within Cobb County Government right now, related to the pandemic and that was existing prior to the pandemic. So with that, we've had a motion, we've had a second, we have had robust discussion. All of those who are in favor of approving this request, please raise your hand. Four commissioners are in support of this motion. All of those who are opposed, please raise your hand. We have one commissioner opposed. The motion passes for one with Commissioner Gamble in opposition. Thank you, DA.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Chairwoman.
Good morning.
I just told Bill he might as well just stay right up here. Kimberly will probably have to come up at some point, too. We'll do a PIP routine in a minute. Thank you all very much for your time. Thank you to the members of the community who are here. This is, I believe, the second time that we have addressed this particular request. Similarly to the DA's request, it was presented to the board. There was a request for some time to sort of get some consistency and understanding of how CARES Act money was going to be treated. And so we're back here on part two of our personnel request. This is a request for four additional clerks in my office to process weapons carry licenses. We are currently experiencing record numbers of applications, also experiencing record number, numbers of denials for people who are ineligible once they apply. It requires a significant amount of resources to process the applications, to vet the applications, to hear the cases where a denial is necessary, and for reconsideration where the background check may be incomplete or misleading. So we are asking for four additional personnel, which will double the staff of our licensed division. To support that, we have, over the past few years, been processing approximately 12,000 applications per year. As of this morning, we had processed 6,087, and we're in the middle of April. We're on pace to do over 21,000. We are currently using appointments because of COVID and needing to space out the applicants, needing to space out our personnel. And so in order to process twice as many applications as the record numbers we were having before COVID, we now need record numbers of applications processed at more than twice that amount. So we are asking for the additional four people. Because doubling the staff will require us to increase our footprint, to place those people and their computers and their phones in order to do the work that they need to do, we are asking for a buildout of the atrium area identified by property management as appropriate with an estimated buildout cost of $75,000 with technology. The annual impact will be 20, 255,444.93 for these positions. As with the DA, we are bringing this to you and trying to be fully transparent that these are expected to be ongoing needs. But this is a FY '22 ask to go through September. We will present you with our budget request with our full staffing requirements going into FY '22. We would put this in there. It will be part of our ask. It is not anything that we have certainty about right now because there's not a lot of certainty in the courts. I would like to make sure and state for the record, we never closed. I keep hearing about these courts being closed, and I don't know who those people are lucky enough to have gotten to close for a minute. But we've been there, we've been processing, we've been doing, and we've been holding court every day since March 14th of 2020. And, and other than about a month and a half where we had to implement some PPE, we've been handling these as well. So I'm here to answer any questions, any concerns that you have. We're just trying to do our job, and we need the resources to get it done.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow?
When would the start date be for these if this is approved? Or do you have applications already for?
We can't, we can't publish it until the.
It's approved, right.
Yeah, it has to be approved, it has to be posted, it has to be vetted. We have to interview everybody, we have to onboard them. So we're looking at probably at least three weeks to a month before we can even get these people in place. Plus, we have to build out the space to put them. Property Management assures me that that will be a more expedited buildout, but I don't have a date certain even for that.
And some of your requests are mandates that you have to.
This is a mandate. And we've got a limited, we, we have very strict time periods. We have to take the application. We have five days to get them fingerprinted. We have 20 days to get the application, the background check reviewed, the license either issued or denied. So we don't have, this is not a discretionary task. This is, this is one of our statutorily mandated functions. If we don't do it correctly, if we don't do it timely, we are subject to legal action and potentially attorney's fees and costs assessed against the county.
Right. And, and I support this. I just want to thank you for your patience from having to come back and.
I appreciate the patience of the applicants who are trying to get in. I know it's been frustrating. I know that it's been frustrating for you guys. I want to give you the information that you need. I want to get them in as soon as they can be, so. I'm sorry? We are still doing them by appointment. We would expect to? Our problem is we don't know what the demand is because these are historical numbers. We're doing more by appointment, twice as many as we've ever done. So we need to be able to figure out when we've satisfied the demand. And then we can figure out if we can safely open it to a first come, first serve. Because right now theoretically, we could have, I don't want to overstate it or be overly dramatic, but we could have a mob scene of, you know, hundreds, if not more, people showing up in the courthouse lobby. And as we're trying to begin safely evictions and jury trials and things, we don't need hundreds or more people standing in the gathering point in the public access entrance to the courthouse. So we're trying to maintain a safe, regulated process. But as soon as we have these people in chairs and adequately trained, we can double the number of appointments. And hopefully, we will ascertain what the top end of this new demand is. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion or questions?
Okay, I just thought that you had a question and we were engaged in discussion. So we can continue that and then have our motion? You can just go ahead, yes, since we already started. It's okay, yes, go ahead.
And just to clarify, Bill Rawlin, if you can answer this, that this one, unlike the previous agenda item, is coverable as a CARES under $132 million CARES expenditure, correct?
We did not specifically look at this one because it was coming out of the fund balance in the same situation that the district attorney's office was, so.
Okay, but I thought I saw a conversation or email that this one would have been a coverable under the $132 million CARES? Yes, no?
There was some discussion that it would be. I think that the agenda, as it was amended for this official presentation, is a fund balance post CARES request.
Right, but my issue with this agenda item is this, if this is an eligible $132 million CARES expenditure, then we should have done it out of the $132 million CARES funding. I understand that we're having to do it this way because of another agenda item later in the book. But again, this is the shell game that I don't like that the county is playing with the taxpayers' dollars.
And Commissioner, we looked at several funding options for this. And just to give you some of the different options that we looked at is even before we add these positions, the probate court is looking at about $100,000 of revenue above their budget just for this one source. So we looked at a lot of different options as we kind of came through this. And just to try to juggle those in the best way we can, what we did is we wanted to do the fund balance appropriation because it was the cleanest, even though we know and do anticipate that even as the judge said, there are going to be an increase in volume. But to the point that they are today, they're $100,000 over. So we know that some of that is going to be restored. And also, as you said, we have an agenda item on the books today to close out the CARES funds, which is, again, sending money back to the general fund, to the fire fund, and 911 funds to close out with the exception of two programs. So we were trying to wrap up everything in a nice tight bow and be done. And again, meeting all the criteria for the eligibility under CARES and then trying to make this the cleanest possible approach for the probate court's request as well. So there was a lot of different conversations about funding, and we didn't want to get into, because as the judge said, the volume question. You know, we could probably do easily $100,000 of this today based on the revenue sources that they have. But if that volume goes up, they could potentially cover some of this or the vast majority of it. But we didn't want to split it up and want to be very clean in this approach and say fund balance appropriation was the cleanest, easiest method. But I did want to call to your attention before your question that there will be additional revenue because they're already at that point today, pre-adding these positions, which that should only help improve that situation. So the reality of this is you're going to have very little impact on the general fund for FY21.
And there are additional questions?
All right, so I will move that we approve this agenda item as presented. Is there a second? Okay, is there any further discussion before we vote on this matter? All of those in favor of this request, please raise your hand. Okay, we have four who are in support of the motion. All of those opposed, please raise your hand. We have one commissioner opposed. The motion carries four one with Commissioner Gambrell in opposition.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, now moving on to our transportation tab. Good morning, Director.
Good morning, Chairwoman and Commissioners. We have 12 items for your consideration this morning. Our first item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number two to the contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $34,305 per Discovery Boulevard sidewalk.
All right, Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Any discussion? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion pass, oh, excuse me, we have four in support. All those in opposition, please raise your hand. The motion passes four one with Commissioner Gambrell in opposition.
Thank you, ma'am. Our second item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve resurfacing contract 2021-1 Countywide Major Thoroughfare's Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $8,393,334.81 for resurfacing of countywide, or county maintained streets.
So moved. Is there a second? Any discussion? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the county manager authorizing emergency repairs and procurement of construction services with Strack, Inc. in a response to a corrugated metal pipe failure under the road in an amount not to exceed $199,224 for Jefferson Township Parkway.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
There are seconds?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is requesting that the county, the Board of Commissioners ratify previous actions by the county manager authorizing emergency repairs on Willow Glen Drive in response to a void under the pavement, approve supplemental agreement number one to project number X2284 with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $25,327.60 for said repairs, and also approve change order number one final to the contract, savings to the project in the amount of $826 for net contract increase of $24,501.60. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right, Commissioner Richardson.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners authorize advertisement for and conjunction of a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more to perform engineering design services for various projects in the 2016 SLOSS Transportation Improvements Program. Further authorize the issuance of requests for proposals or task orders, task order work authorizations to procure required services as shown on the attached list of upcoming projects in the first half of 2021.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Roswell for engineering design and construction of a replacement bridge on Willio Road over Willio Creek.
All right, Commissioner Richardson.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve amendment number two to the Cobb Framework Agreement with the Town Center and Community Improvement District for Town Center Ninde Creek Trail, Kennesaw State University Bicycle Pedestrian Connector, Busby Drive Trail, State PI number 0012874. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with DNH Construction Company in an amount not to exceed $184,395.25 for Busby Drive Trail. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing submission of a surface transportation block grant program application, amendment to the Federal Transit Administration for Transit Capital Assistance in an amount not to exceed $2 million for preliminary engineering design of Kremlin Transfer Center, project number E10C02. Authorize the acceptance of allocated surface transportation block grant program funding and authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman or her designee to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution of authorizing submission of a surface transportation block grant program application amendment in an amount not to exceed $4,437,500 for preliminary engineering design of Marietta Transfer Center relocation, project number E10C01. Authorize the acceptance of allocated surface transportation block grant program funding and authorize the corresponding budget transactions and authorize the chairwoman or her designee to execute those necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing submission of a surface transportation block grant program application amendment to the Federal Transit Administration for Transit Capital Assistance in an amount not to exceed $2 million for preliminary engineering design of Marietta Maintenance Facility Expansion, project number X2406. Authorize the acceptance of allocated surface transportation block grant program funding. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman or her designee to execute those necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you, ma'am. And our last item for consideration is requesting that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing submission of a FY21 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant Program Application for Safety Action Plan Projects to the Georgia Department of Transportation in the amount not to exceed $240,931.25 for thermoplastic striping and raised pavement markers on county maintained roads and authorize the chairman to execute those necessary documents.
All right, so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Director. Okay, next up, we have our parks tab.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners. Madam County Manager. Our item this morning is for the Board of Commissioners to authorize the advertisement for and conduct of a public hearing prior to expending more than $100,000 for Parks Program Management Services to include the 2022 Parks SLOSS Program, remaining projects under the 2011 and 2016 Parks SLOSS Program and limited general engineering services for Parks Operations Capital Projects, and authorize the issuance of a request for proposals to secure these services utilizing Selection Process One, competitive negotiations.
All righty, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes five zero. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next up, we have our Support Services tab.
Ms. Stanley had to step away, so I won't handle this for her.
Certainly.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chairwoman and Commissioner and County Manager. She has one item. This item is about the location of our future cabinet shop to approve by the voters in the 2016 SLOSS that various site visits, support services, property management, rithorility, considered potential locations. We would like to recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve an agreement for purchase and sale in the amount of $1,260,000 with European Sync Real Estate LLC for the acquisition of real property consisting of an industrial building and approximately .992 acres of land located at 1970 McCollum Parkway, Kennesaw. Approve the terms and conditions set forth in the forms attached. Authorize the payment of associated land acquisitions cost. Authorize the closing of the purchase of the property. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and authorize the chairwoman to execute all necessary documents and take all other actions necessary to appropriate, to accomplish the foregoing purpose.
All right, Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. This has been a long time coming, hasn't it, Scott?
It has been.
And I'm sorry Sharon isn't here to witness the vote, but I would like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 56.
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to concur with Commissioner Burl. I'm so happy to see this move forward. If there's any department that's been deserving, it's this department as the employees have done so much to help beautify, you know, all of Cobb County and to furnish it. It's about time that we return the favor and give you guys a decent building to work in and to be able to continue the great support that you guys have provided for us. I'm very happy to support this motion today. With that, all those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. The team says thank you, and I think several are watching on TV.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners and County Manager. We have seven items this morning, so I'll be up here for a little while. Our first item is to request the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchasing director to purchase data center technology architecture from Ahead, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $363,364.44 for compute hardware and associated installation and configuration services in the county's new data center, 2016 SLOSS Project X0010, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
All right, so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to request the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchasing director to purchase data center technology architecture, excuse me, from Ahead, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $882,283.38 for virtualization software and associated installation and configuration services in the county's new data center, 2016 SLOSS Project X0010, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to request the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchasing director to purchase data center technology architecture from Prosys Information Systems, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $2,545,539.67 for storage hardware and associated installation and configuration services in the county's new data center, 2016 SLOSS Project X0010, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to request the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchasing director to purchase data center technology architecture from Presidio Network Solutions LLC in an amount not to exceed $1,669,316.19 for network hardware and associated installation and configuration services in the county's new data center, 2016 SLOSS Project X0010, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes five zero.
Our next item is a joint item with the Sheriff's Office to request the Board, am I, did I skip one? Okay. Sorry, let me start over. Our next item is a joint item with the Sheriff's Office to request the Board of Commissioners approve a project agreement for the installation of the county's Enterprise Video Surveillance System for the Cobb County Superior Court Judge's parking lot. This project is an eligible project under the 2016 SLOSS Support Services Facilities Improvements Program X0920. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a project agreement with Controlled Access, Inc. in an amount not to exceed eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. Authorize a ten percent contingency fund in an amount not to exceed eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next item this morning is a joint item with Community Development, Department of Transportation, and the Fire Department to request the Board of Commissioners approve a sole source contract amendment number one to the Licenses and Services Agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc. in an amount not to exceed two million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars to implement the Intergov Community Development Suite Software, 2016 SLOSS Project X zero zero two zero. Authorize a ten percent project contingency in an amount not to exceed two hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty cents. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our final item this morning is to request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Environmental System Research Institute, Inc. to design and implement a facilities information system of record under provisions of Georgia Department of Administrative Services Contract Nine 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 Nine, AWP zero two-two four-two zero one seven zero 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 one, 2016 SLOSS Project X zero zero two zero, in an amount not to exceed one million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Also authorize the purchasing director to purchase related technology infrastructure greater than a hundred thousand dollars under provisions of various Georgia Department of Administrative Services contracts in an amount not to exceed a hundred and nineteen thousand, eighty-three dollars and twelve cents. Authorize a ten percent project contingency in an amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, forty-five dollars and eleven cents. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Property Management.
Excuse me, one moment. We have a question by Commissioner. Yes, that's okay.
For the pink sheets revised, should we be making the motion to approve as revised?
Yes, we should. So, let me see if we have any one of those that needed to be.
Almost all the Kimberleys were.
I see sixty-two and sixty-three. Fifty-eight.
And, yeah.
Okay.
Fifty-eight was revised.
Okay.
Sixty-two, sixty-three.
Yes, for our county attorney.
Those are the sheets that we would, were recognized as being revised and are currently before the board, so we always go back to those current sheets. Sometimes in a consent, when we're looking at the consent agenda, some of them are revised, some of them are not revised, and we'll say as revised.
Okay.
It doesn't hurt to say that, but since these are the most current before you, those are the ones that would be approved.
Thank you for clarifying that. And thank you, Commissioner Burrow, for inquiring. Okay, Scott?
All right, Property Management has one item. It's the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one with Croft and Associates in the amount of eighteen thousand, eight hundred dollars for additional architectural services related to the rebuild of Fire Station Number Seven located at eight fifty Hurt Road, Marietta, a 2016 SLOSS Project X ten twenty-two. Authorize the corresponding budget transfers and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right, Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Hello again, Chair, Board of Commissioners, County Manager. Fire only has one item today on regular, and we would like to recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement and solicitation of sealed bids from interested parties for an onsite cleaning and maintenance facility for firefighting gear and equipment, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved. Oh, excuse me. I meant not moved. This is actually District. Thank you, Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, the motion passes five zero. Thank you, Chief. Moving on to Finance.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. Finance has one item today. And at this time, all, the majority of the programs under the CARES grant have been completed. So we are requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve all necessary allocations and transfers within the CARES Fund to reimburse other county funds for CARES eligible expenditures incurred in those respective funds, authorize the corresponding budget and accounting transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right, so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The motion carries four one with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to our second public comment.
Yes, Chairwoman, there's one person who signed up for public comment, Cynthia Johnson.
Okay. I believe she's outside.
Looking, see if it's still morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone, Chairwoman and Commissioners. I hope everyone is well. We're gonna start this out on a positive note. I know you guys are, have a lot going on and very overwhelmed, so I'm here to support you. On Friday, I sat in the courtroom and listened to a few evictions. I must applaud the judge for being polite, courteous, and sympathetic to the people facing eviction. It was really good to see tenants and owners being offered rental assistance and mediation to help resolve their matters. We must think outside the box when it comes to helping with the housing crisis. The rental system funds are only a temporary fix to a much bigger problem. Tenants have been struggling prior to COVID, however, the pandemic has created a monster. We must find ways to help tenants remain in their homes. We must also create an environment that tenants and owners have an even playing field. Tenants have been at a disadvantage for decades. It is imperative that our elected officials begin implementing ordinance to help address income discrimination and rent control. According to Atlanta City Council ordinance, one thousand and fifty-five people lost their housing vouchers, also known as Section Eight, between July two thousand and eighteen and July two thousand and nineteen because the families could not find suitable housing. In addition, the ordinance stated families who were able to find housing during that same period were primarily regulated to lower psychoeconomic areas with low performing schools and limited access to transportation. Marietta Housing Authority Executive Report as of March tenth, two thousand and twenty-one states. Portability increased with forty-four new participants, bringing our two thousand and twenty-one total new ports to sixty-five with eighty-four individuals currently looking for a place to rent. Conversely, we had forty-eight individuals poor outside during two thousand and twenty-one. Counting the vast, we currently have two thousand nine hundred and sixty-four people on vouchers in Cobb. Currently, there's four hundred on the waiting list. I wrote this the other day. Here I am again, up at three o'clock in the morning, thinking about losing my house. I'm going through litigation for eviction. That is not because I failed to pay rent or I had a lease violation, but simply because I expressed my concerns to government officials. I lived in my home for fourteen years without any late payments or anything like that. Because I received this Section Eight housing notification, I'm fighting to keep my voucher due to the inability to find a place that accepts vouchers. I have a list right here like I showed you last time. I feel like I'm beating a dead horse, but I must continue. All the paperwork that I'm fighting to stand in this folder are all the ones that I've been looking for houses. Here's sixty-eight properties that do not accept housing vouchers. I had me given a thirty-day extension which ends April fifteenth, however, I haven't found a place. I made every effort to locate suitable housing without any success. You see the attachments? I have, I have two case managers and a house specialist from Cal County outpatient services assisting me, however, we keep running to the same issues of not being able to, people were not accepting vouchers. Another reason, another reason, tenants aren't moving or maybe protected from eviction at this time for, because of not having income. The housing are, the housing that are available are located in high crime areas and not suitable to the, to, I'd say to what I'm used to. Right now, I would accept anything, but you can see these are the places I've been calling that I'm not accepting it. With that being said, the Atlanta City Council passing ordinance that bars in-town landlords from turning away would be tenants based on their income. Additionally, the legislation approved by twelve to two vote would prohibit landlords from denying recipients of government vouchers who apply to live at their, at their properties. The ordinance was superheaded by District Three Councilman Attanleya Brown, who noted in a press release that laws are ready on the books to protect you from.
Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson, I'm sure you're five minutes.
And I'll send the rest to you in email. Thank you for your time.
Chairwoman, that concludes the second group in the public comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. We are now at our Appointments tab. And Agenda Item Number Sixty-seven, Commissioner Richardson.
Just announcing the appointment of Myron Massey to keep Cobb beautiful.
Very good. And Item Sixty-eight, Commissioner Richardson again.
Also announcing the appointment of John Hitchens to keep Cobb beautiful as well.
All right. And Item Sixty-nine, that's Commissioner Sheffield.
To announce the appointment of Jacqueline McSwain to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you, Commissioner. We are now at our Commissioner's Public Address. We'll begin with Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you, and a big congratulations to our Cobb Parks for being the best of Cobb. Many Cobb Parks and facilities were recently honored as some of the best in area by Cobb Life Magazine. We are proud of our Parks Department and staff for these amazing achievements. Each year, the Marietta Daily Journal asks its readers to nominate, then vote on their favorites to earn the distinction of Best of Cobb. This year's contest included first, second, and third place winners in two hundred and thirty-four categories, including arts and entertainment, automotive and recreational vehicles, dining and nightlife, health, beauty and wellness, kids and education, pets, real estate, and finance, services, and shopping. For more information on all the winners, you can visit thebestofcob.com. But again, congratulations to our Parks Department. Baseball at the historic Ponce de Leon Park has a virtual presentation on Cobb baseball stories, which we think will appeal to our baseball fans, which our season has just begun. Celebrating the opening season of baseball, which is, will be available online from April twelfth to May tenth. Batter Up is a Georgia baseball stories. They're celebrating the season as you travel back in time with historian and baseball fan, Andrew J. Bramlett. It's filled with baseball lore from Georgia's rich connections to America's game. This virtual presentation will surprise you. You are sure to learn something new, no matter how deep your knowledge. This is a virtual event and is not being held at any location. You can contact Virginia Everett at seven seven zero eight zero one five three two zero or email her at virginia dot everett at cobbcounty dot org. Poem the Pavement. April is National Poetry Month, and you can drop by the Amphitheater at the North Cobb Regional Library anytime in April to pen a poem on our pavement in sidewalk chalk. The chalk and original verse or add to a collaborative community poem are ready in progress. We hope to have some epic odes, heartfelt haiku, and vivacious verses from poets young and old to share on social media. If you have questions, you can call our Children's Department at seven seven zero eight zero one five three two two. And lastly, talking about coming full circle. On Saturday, we had the opportunity to have our first open house for the Green Bullard Historic Home. But what was fun is I went back and actually found my speech from two thousand and five that I made to the Board at that time, encouraging the Board to even consider what was the two thousand and six Parks Bond that purchased this property. And I'd like to just reread my closing statement to the Board at that time. "This bond referendum is not about politics. It's about ensuring our future and generations to come. Everything we do today will have an impact on tomorrow. Open land in Cobb County will soon be extinct. West Cobb may have the last few large parcels of land available, yet daily we see that change from pasture to asphalt. Let us use this bond referendum as an opportunity to preserve what we cannot manufacture in the future, parks lands." And it was sitting at this open house on Saturday that I remembered that I had said that sixteen years ago. So a huge kudos to our staff who helped us bring a hundred and eighty years of history back to our community as we celebrated the grand opening, as they had fully restored the Green Bullard Museum. The open house will be from nine to one on Saturdays. It'll always be the second Saturday of the month. They are doing a limited admission right now due to COVID. The, they, in the future, they plan to have a Living History Days that will focus on early pioneer pharma life, Civil War medicine, and Cherokee life. Each room of the house is dedicated to a particular time. The first room is early Cherokee and pioneer life from eighteen thirty to eighteen sixties. The second room will cover the eighteen sixty to eighteen eighty time period. And the third room will focus on the Bullard family, eighteen eighty to present. The last room will be a visitor's center with information on the many volunteer groups and opportunities to sign up for at the parks. Green Meadows Preserve is located at thirty-seven eighty Dallas Highway, Marietta. So again, a huge shout out to our Parks Department that has been diligent in seeing this to fruition, but also our Friends of Green Meadows Preserve Group that has been active daily since two thousand and five, not only on the Steering Committee, but helping the parks run daily and including Jim Bearden with the Bluebird Trail that has drawn many people from across not only Georgia, but the United States to see what he has done there. So congratulations. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson?
All right. So, updates from our office. First, we had our quarterly report town hall. Yay. Went over a recap of the things over the last three months that we should be really excited and proud of. And I also introduced the priorities for this year that I'll be focused on in coordination with all of our government officials and friends and of course, members of the community as well. And just really appreciate all the feedback that came as a result of that town hall. And you are welcome to watch it as well. It's available on the Cobb County Facebook. And also, if you go to the D two Cobb website for our constituents, you'll see a copy of the presentation that was given as well. We also had our Josh Town Hall where we discussed Z seventy-two, which is of course, a very contentious case taking place. We know that it's continued on, but if you do want to see a recap of that, we went over some of the changes, how does this compare to the actual Josh Plan, and all of those different nuances. We are still reading and accepting all the emails that come in regarding that particular case. I'm always interested in hearing what the community has to say, and we will continue to work through those things. Next. Just wanted to say congratulations to the new appointments. Get a chance to see them. They're smiling. Hopefully, they'll still be smiling as they join and participate on that board. Looking forward to some of what they'll bring to the table. And this weekend, we have a community huddle. So all of the huddles are really just opportunities for the community to talk about whatever is on their mind. In this case, we also have two members of our community cabinet, so you'll get a chance to meet them as well and ask them questions. This is infrastructure and housing and zoning. Community updates. So, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month in, in the U.S., one in three women and one in six men. One in three women and one in six men will actually experience some form of violence in their lifetime. And in order to learn more and participate or to gain some tools, information on tools to be able to prevent or respond to sexual violence, you can visit the National Sexual Violence Resource Center for that information. Next up, Keep Cobb Beautiful. So staff and law enforcement personnel will be at Precinct 1 in Kennesaw and the C. Freeman Pool Senior Service Center in Smyrna to collect medications that will be, for disposing medications and devices. So things that are acceptable are prescription over the counter in liquid and pill form, ointments, patches, creams, vials, pet medicines. Unacceptable items are needles, sharps of any types, EpiPen, durable medical equipment, CPAP nebulizers, illegal drugs, aerosol cans, biohazardous materials, mercury thermometers, personal care products, and household hazardous waste like pesticides, oil, and gas. Everything that will be collected will be immediately sealed in boxes and destroyed. Library. April is Autism Acceptance Month. It's a time to spread awareness, promote acceptance, and ignite change. So our libraries have compiled a book list by, about, or featuring someone with autism. There are books for all ages, both fiction and nonfiction, and some titles include Benji the Bad Day and Me, Me and Mr. P., and Life Animated: A Story of Sidekicks, Heroes, and Autism. Please expand your awareness around these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burl?
Well, earlier this morning, you heard about the heroic acts of our 50 years of service with our Cobb County Fire Department, and this is a very unique rescue that they did, and I just had to report it. Last Wednesday, Cobb County Animal Services received a call about a baby owl that had fallen out of its nest, and the mother was nowhere in sight. Upon arriving on the scene, Officer Mixon assessed the situation and found the baby owl on the ground next to a tree, and you can barely see the little white dot down He called Cobb County Fire for assistance. They climbed the ladder and safely returned the baby owl to the nest, where it curled back up underneath its mother and back in a warm, safe place. So thank you, Cobb County Animal Services and Cobb County Fire for helping save this precious baby. We've heard of getting in ladders and rescuing cats, but I've never heard of a baby owl, so it's kind of unique. Thank you. Congratulations to Life University. We would like to send our congratulations to Life University's Dr. Sid Williams Center for Chiropractic Research Team for winning an award sponsored by the National Board of Chiropractic Examiners at the recent Association of Chiropractic Colleges 27th Educational and Research Agenda Conference, and the title was Innovation in the Age of Distance Learning. You can read the full press release at living.life.edu/press-releases. How to Do Business with Cobb. We've got the Purchasing Department and the Department of Transportation staff will host another How to Do Business with Cobb County Government webinar at noon on Wednesday, April 21st. This month's free information session will highlight the Fleet Department and the type of business opportunities for bid, such as repairs, maintenance, and the purchase of vehicles. Registration is required, and you can visit cobbcounty.org/doin-business for more information and to register. The Art Place at Mountain View is opening registration at 9:30 on Wednesday, April 21st for the Art Place Summer Camp. A booklet of camp information will be released prior to registration. All campers ages 6 to 18 are invited to participate in outdoor activities, performing arts, and much more. The Art Place is located at 3330 Sandy Plains Road in Marietta. And United Military Care continues to serve our veterans, and we thank them for all they do. And consider participating in the following upcoming events. They have a gently used book collection through April 23rd. They have a lot of activities going on. They have drive-throughs for food. So visit unitedmilitarycare.org for more information and see what all they're doing in the community for our veterans. And last but not least, if you haven't already or don't subscribe, please sign up for my newsletter. There's a lot of information in there, not only on events throughout the district and the county, but also DOT projects under construction, and what to avoid with traffic and construction projects, and also a recap of the zoning coming up next week for District 3. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield?
Yes, thank you. Okay, District 4 news and updates. Slide 1, please. Oh, that's nice. The South Cobb community celebrated the opening of a long-awaited Discovery Park. Our newest 150-acre passive park alongside the Chattahoochee River features a variety of well-preserved Civil War-era earthworks. A portion of the property has been listed on the National Register of Historic Places and has deed restrictions, which allow only its use as a historic park with passive recreation and interpretation. The Cobb Board of Commissioners was joined by Parks Recreation Board, Parks Appointees, the Riverline Group, and members of the Mableton Improvement Coalition. Although shy of, although, although opened shy of just two weeks, we are receiving great feedback from the community with lots of anticipation and excitement for visiting the park. Thank you all who have worked to bring this wonderful asset along the Chattahoochee Riverline to South Cobb. Next slide, please. In celebration of National Library Week last week, South Cobb Regional Library staff in collaboration with the Atlanta Community Bank serviced 146 families with fresh produce and canned goods to help stock their pantries. Thank you to staff for ensuring a successful event, and to those that pitched in to volunteer, including Representative Erica Thomas and Deidra Watts. A huge thanks to our community partners at Reflections of Trinity for distributing the remainder of the perishable items at their location in Powder Springs. Next slide. Warwick Dunn Charity, I'm sorry, Warwick Dunn Charities in partnership with Habitat for Humanity, Aaron's Rental, and many other sponsors provided a new home to Miss Esmolly and her beautiful children. Mr. Dunn provided the family with a down payment for the home, as well as with new furnishings, appliances, food, cleaning supplies, and a symbolic apple pie as a reflection of the American dream. We know Warwick Dunn is a former Atlanta Falcon, but he is also a philanthropist whose own tragedy has led him to provide for single mom households. Mr. Dunn's mom was a police officer in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, who worked tirelessly to save for a home for her and her six children. She was an off-duty police officer escorting a businesswoman to a bank and was ambushed and killed by two armed robbers. Her dream of homeownership was never realized. Warwick has decided to honor his mother's memory by helping single-parent families obtain homeownership. Thanks to Dunn for helping this Molly family achieve the American dream. You are invited to yet another ribbon-cutting ceremony in Mableton. It's a ceremony for the Mableton Town Square Park at 2:30 this coming Wednesday, tomorrow, April 20, no, I'm sorry, next week, Wednesday, April 21st. The property is located adjacent to Mableton Elementary School. This one-acre pocket park nestled on Church Street in the center of the original downtown Mableton was created as part of a long-range master plan aimed at re-imaging Mableton's historic center. The new playground was installed in the fall, and this park is already in a great neighborhood amenity. Slide 5. Next slide. Is that time again? Join the zoning conversation on Wednesday, April 28th with me and Gault Porter, the Planning Commissioner for District 4. Stay on the front side of development and keep abreast of zoning applications in your community. Get in the zone. And you may send an email to deidra.watts@cobbcounty.org for the meeting invitation. Next slide. I am pleased to announce that downtown Mableton has been selected to become the home of a luxury residential flats and community retail development. This boutique development will have luxury amenities that will mirror the development on Riverview Road in Smyrna. In fact, is the same developer. It will also offer retail space for a community restaurant below its luxury flats and is a short walk from the Floyd Road Bike Depot trailhead at the Silver Comet Trail. Join us for a roundtable discussion on May 4th to learn more about the development, and again, you may send an email to deidra.watts@cobbcounty.org for the meeting link. Next slide. Are you looking for employment? If the answer is yes, AQC is hiring for flaggers. It's the Traffic Control Services. They have more than 10 openings available. They offer free training, competitive pay, drive-time pay, annual bonuses, monthly awards, medical, dental, and vision. For more information about this employment opportunity, please visit www.aqctraffic.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Since I'm the last thing between you and lunch, I'm going to try to go through these as quickly as possible. As you heard at the top of our meeting, our COVID rates are going down. We are fortunate to see it approaching lower levels, but just remember that 100 cases out of 100,000 is still considered to be a high transmission rate. Therefore, you're encouraged to please continue to take caution, and wash your hands, wear your mask, and watch your distance. Speaking of COVID, we are fortunate to now have a call center up and running. Thanks again to many of our staff members here, and also Cobb Douglas Public Health. Want to thank IS and Cassie with emergency management, and our Commissioners, because they help to vote for funding for this effort. And this will help persons who have questions or difficulty with signing up for vaccination. They can call this number and get assistance. Phone number is 833-974-3366. And vaccination lines open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. through 6:00 p.m. Next slide. Our Senior Citizen Council is having a forum with state legislators virtually on April 16th at 11:00 a.m. for any of our seniors who are interested in moving forward policy measures through the state. I encourage you to please participate. April is Local Government Month, and we are fortunate to partner with National, the National Association of County Officials to help get the word out and encourage people to learn more about what goes on at the local level, as all politics is local. In my past newsletter, I shared that there is an art competition for students that want to draw a picture of how local government is important to them, and you can go to my newsletter for more details on submission. The submission date is actually in the month of May. All right. We are fortunate to have a rental assistance program, which was approved by Commissioners, and we have additional information that is being provided online and throughout many different locations here in Cobb. One side provides how you can apply for funding, and the other slide of the flyer provides different phone numbers one can call if they need assistance. I want to let people know that even though we have an emergency rental assistance program, there are nonprofits in Cobb County that help with rental assistance every day, and I encourage you to ask what are all the programs that are available, even if it's outside of the Cobb Emergency Rental Assistance Program. You may find that there are resources that are available that can help you if you have not been able to be assisted through the program. For instance, there was a speaker today during public comment that spoke about the unwillingness of their landlord to participate in this program. I know that there have been times where some agencies have helped people relocate into other housing. With that, just want to thank everyone for your time. This has been quite a time for us here in Cobb County. Over the past couple of weeks, it's been quite a whirlwind, as there have been some changes to what we anticipated was going to be a festive July for us with the Major League Baseball's All-Star Game. I want to assure people that even though that has changed, what has not changed is the spirit of Cobb County and what attracted MLB to even have the All-Star Game here. We are fortunate that the Braves have continued playing baseball, and their season is in full swing. Some Commissioners have attended their first opening. Want to encourage people to still get out and to support our businesses and support Cobb County. We have a lot to be grateful for, and we will continue to have a lot to be grateful for in the days ahead. One thing that has not changed for me is my commitment for us to be an inclusive county, and I perceive that civic participation is important, and also economic development and vibrancy are also important, and I don't perceive these two to be polar opposites. I think all of these things work together to make sure we have a vibrant county, and so we will, at least my office will be pushing forward a platform for Cobb County to be open for business, open for service, and open to all, to let people know that Cobb County is indeed an open county, and want to also assure our businesses that we recognize the impact that that decision had, but we also know that Cobb County is where you decided to call home, and we want to ensure that you're supported through the summer, and a lot of people are working on how we can make sure that you know that you're supported, and hopefully, we can get some return to you in spite of what may be perceived as laws. But I also want to assure our citizens, there are some things that are not in our control at the state level, but our Elections Department is in our control, and we will do our best to make sure our citizens are educated on what new laws are, and to make sure that we ensure that our polls are as accessible as they can be with the state provisions. Civic participation is critical for us to have a healthy functioning Cobb County. Having vibrant businesses is critical to us having a healthy and functioning Cobb County. So I want to encourage us to do what we can to make sure Cobb County continues to embrace, to embrace the health, function, and welfare of our community. I just believe in the power of Cobb, and I believe that the future remains with the optimist. So let's be optimistic about what our opportunities are, and I believe our best days are still ahead of us. So with that, thank you for your time, and hope that you all have a great rest of your Tuesday.